Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. Seems like it's gonna be a beautiful day. This is the Mahoney County Commissioners Hearing Room, regular meeting number thirty-three, Thursday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and it's likely after ten. Do we have any public comments? Okay, Terry, you know the drill.
I wish more people, Terry, sorry, one, two, seventy, East Grant Street, Little Ohio. I wish more public would come out and speak. Because I don't want to be the only. You know, you're speaking for them. So, I'm a progressive Democrat. There, there's a nice restaurant, just area downtown in the old Smoky Hollow area.
Yes.
You have to go on Thursdays, just like being back in the nineteen hundreds. Because they open up their house, they cook the pizza or bacon, and you eat it in the backyard.
Sordage.
Yeah. And they're trying to bring back the Smoky Hollow area again, you know. But, and then also you have the Menon, the Maronites Lebanese Festival this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, in the Barrow Hill, and the Greek Festival in Boardman, St. John's.
Oh, all the same weekend.
Yeah.
So we could just eat away, we could eat right around Mahoney County.
You do not have to go to Europe, get European flavor, just come to Mahoney Valley, you know, and, yeah, I wish more people would come and speak, and, you know, another, people are running for office. I would love to see them at these meetings, like your opponent, Carol. I got into debate with him on Facebook. I said, if you want me to take you seriously, I'd like to see you at these meetings. You just can't, you know, throw your words around on Facebook and think people are gonna vote for you. I want to see you face, face to face, you know, and, and that goes for, like even Youngstown City Council. This is another debate, Sorbet, they're coming to town, you know, the, the new, oh, heating.
Youngstown Thermal.
Yeah, yeah, that should be looked into, because there's, there's gonna be an opposition, and it's getting stronger, you know, pros and cons about it. So, um.
Thank you for everything, for all your info.
Just, just for.
You are.
I'll see you, I'll see everyone at these festivals.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number thirty-two, Thursday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and approval of bills payment.
Motion approved. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes, advertisements for bids, number one, engineers.
Morning, everybody. Number one is the rebid for the Bridge Rehab and Painting Project. Our initial bid came in well over the original engineer's estimate, then there were some delays due to a shortage of certain types of paint. So we're now able to rebid this project.
Okay, number two, sanitary.
Commissioners, number two is the Mahoney County Metropolitan Sewer District. This is our influence bar screen equipment and startup service for the Meander wastewater treatment plant at thirty-two sixty-four Main Street, Mineral Ridge, Ohio.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Advertisement for bids one and two, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, advertisement for bids. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number one, journal entries, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, journal entries. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number two, agreements, jobs and family services, A, B, and C.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Audrey, Nancy, and Jim Fortunato. Agreements, letter A, job and family services, amendment number three, with meals on wheels for delivery of bills to APS clients in the additional amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, non-general. B, job and family service, amendment number one, with Evergreen Healthcare Services Incorporated to extend the non-emergent transportation services until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, per unit pricing, non-general. Letter C, job and family services, amendment number one, with Garwin Incorporated to extend the non-emergent transportation services until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, unit pricing, non-general. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. D, let.
Morning, Commissioners. This D is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for chip home repair work at one seventy-three Como in Struthers for sixty-five hundred dollars, non-general. And E is an agreement with Howland Company for a rehab to be done at thirteen eighteen Mahoney in the amount of twenty-three thousand three oh one twenty-five, also non-general.
Okay, thank you. F, recycling.
Morning, Commissioners and members of the S. This is the agreements with falling for drop off site leases, all non-general funding, Cantfield Township, the amount of three thousand dollars, Pete Lake Mill Clean, and the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars, and the Village of Lowville, the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Thanks, Jim. G and H, sanitary. Pat?
Commissioners, letter G is an agreement with Greenwood Chevrolet for spring bed liners on eight of our pickup trucks in the amount of three thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars, non-general funds. And letter H is an agreement with City Printing for the printing of the twenty twenty-two summer pipeline newsletter in the estimated amount of six thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars, eighty-six cents, also non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. And I, the Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with Hall's Public Safety Company. I'll fit four of our four interceptor SUVs with emergency lighting sirens, protective providers, the amount of four, forty thousand nine dollars, sixty-two cents, non-general.
Thank you, Jim. Number two, agreements, A to Y, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, agreements. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Yes. Number three, change orders, A, Commissioners, O and B. Audrey?
Commissioners, this is a change order number four with B and B contractors and developers for the MCBDD Office Renovations Project in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, and it's non-general.
Okay, thank you. Number three, change orders, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, change orders. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number four, road closings, A, Pat, engineers.
Commissioners, this is to close Baird Road between Columbiana Road and East Garfield Road for thirty days, beginning September sixth. This is for a culvert replacement.
Okay, thank you. Number four, road closings, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, road closing. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number one, resolutions additions, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, resolutions addition. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number two, record of bids, A and B, let. Let, Phil.
About that, I was muted. A and B are both bids that were received, A is for one twenty-two Creed Street in Struthers, and B is for one thirty-three West Wood Street in Lowville, Ohio, for chip rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you. C, sanitary. Pat? Pat, you're on.
Hold on a minute.
Okay. Old Winter Trail Pump Station.
You're on what letter? C?
C.
Record of bids.
Record of bids.
Sorry. Commissioners, letter C is the Old Winter Trail Pump Station Sewer Improvement, number five twenty-one. This was a rebid. Our initial bid due to inflation came in well over the original engineer's estimate.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Number two, record of bids.
Motion through record. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number three, resolution of awards, A, let, Phil.
Rehab job that was awarded to W and W Construction at seventy-seven, seven sixty Coatesville Road, the amount of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars, non-general.
Okay, thank you. Number three, record of bid, record of awards, resolution of awards, A, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, resolution of awards. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vemidiogati?
Yes. Number four, resolutions. A, Commissioners, O and B, and B, Commissioners, O and B, Audrey.
Item number A, you and I have on here, we have the Campbell City Schools for two hundred and fifty thousand. We have the Mahoney Valley Manufacturers Coalitioning for a hundred and eighty-four thousand. I'll have Anna speak a little bit on those, and then we have someone from the agencies there.
Okay. Anna?
Good morning, Commissioners. The Campbell City Schools is a contribution to their health and wellness facility that they're building out on their campus in Camel Office six sixteen. The Commissioners have gone and already helped them break ground on this event, I think, a couple of weeks ago. But I believe somebody was going to attend a meeting today on their behalf and may like to say a few words.
Okay, do you want to say a few words? Okay. State your name and address for the record. Should've made that young Brownlee lady show up.
Oh, that's not for you. Hi, good morning, everyone. My name's Nora Montez. I'm the treasurer with Campbell City Schools. Mr. Bowen couldn't make it today. He's our superintendent, but today's our back to school and service day. So we can, all the staff are back at our school district, and so he's busy giving presentations, but he wished he could have been here. So I'm, I'm here, along with Carol Michaels. His ministry assistant is here as well. So we are definitely, we're so thankful and grateful for this award from the Commissioners. The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will enable us to, because we've started our whole, it's the W, Whole Child, Whole Family Service Center, the WCWF, which is Phase Three, it's the addition of our CLWCC. If you haven't been there, we're at four thirty-six Struthers, Coatesville Road. It's an extension of the Camel Elementary Middle School of our campus, and so this will definitely help with our project. We partnered with Akron Children's Hospital to, to increase, to add specialized mental health services and pediatric specialty services to help with the social, social, emotional well-being of not only just of our families and students in our district, but from Mahoney Valley. So the impact that this will have, not just for Campbell City Schools, City of Camel, but for the greater region, so thank you. We are so appreciative of what this will do.
And then you would extend that to other school districts as well, is that correct?
Yes, definitely. And we've already broken ground, as you were there for the groundbreaking ceremony. And I believe completion is expected spring of twenty twenty-three. So they're busy working, drive by, you'll see lots happening there. And once again, this amount is huge. It's just the impact that it's gonna have. We are so excited to enhance the services that are already there at our facility. So, so thank you, thank you very much.
You've got, you've got to have a busy job.
Yes.
All the things going on and all the, you know, the improvements and the construction, and, you know, it's, it's exciting times.
It is, very exciting times, and just, you know, proud to be a part of it.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah, and, you know, everyone involved there, you know, that we've had the pleasure to be with and meet is just so, got so much passion, vision, and excitement about it that, you know, it just looks like great things going on.
Thank you, thank you. And it's just, it's just, the way it's just extending, and it's just morphing, and, and all the partners we have on board and collaboration and just the support, and.
Well, it helps everyone, not only just Campbell.
Right, exactly.
You're in an area where you have surrounding area, so you, you're putting in a wraparound service there, which is good.
Thank you.
I just, real quick thing too, this is a good example of the Commissioners investing in the, in the future workforce because of all the services and things that are be happening there. It is something that will extend job development within Mahoney County and in training those who will be our future workers.
Exactly.
So I wanted to put that out there because.
The workers that they're gonna have to hire as professionals to commit as.
And they're, and they're doing training and all kinds of.
That's part of our existing, right, our, our CWCC, exactly, yes.
Yes.
And so now that we have that, have all that going on with the STEM, the workforce development, and now adding mental health services and pediatric, specialized pediatric services for the youth, it's huge, just huge. It's unfortunate, bless, yes.
We're proud to help projects like this.
Thank you, I'm so patient, can't tell you. Thanks, thank you.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. And in addition, we have the Mahoney Valley Manufacturers Coalition. I believe Julie Michael Smith may be there? Did you guys present the check already, or?
No, we didn't. Say a few words, or you, Anna, and then.
This is another great project that's investing in our workforce, and I'm sure Julie can explain a lot better the details. There's a lot of moving parts to this program. Julie, Commissioners, if you want to go ahead.
Julie, you wanna?
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you?
Julie Michael Smith, I'm a project manager with Mahoney Valley Manufacturing Coalition, and Alex Herzer, who is the Assistant Director for the Coalition, and, you know, first and foremost, thank you Commissioners for investing in the Coalition and our effort within Mahoney Works Program. What this manufacturing works program will do is really build upon some existing work that, that we've been doing that was funded by Jobs Ohio, the State's Economic Development Agency, to really connect job seekers with employment opportunities here in our community, particularly focusing on those in-demand industries that offer career paths and well-paying, stable jobs for our community residents. So really focusing on manufacturing primarily, as well as healthcare. This funding will allow us to build on that success and also bring in some of our other programs, such as Work Advance, which is a fabulous earn and learn program, an opportunity for individuals who, while they're actually being trained, can earn income, because oftentimes that is a barrier. People can't participate in training because they need to work. So how do they advance and invest in themselves if they're working a menial job and they can't get the training? So this helps address this issue as well. It's also, we're also tying in, as Anna said, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, the emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and really working with our community partners like MCTA, Flying High, National Center for Urban Solutions, to tap those hidden talent pools in our community and connect them with our local manufacturers. We're looking forward, you know, I'm excited to, you know, learn more about the work at the CWCC. I've been out there a number of times, and as you mentioned, Audrey, with the upcoming and next generation workforce, that's a perfect pipeline and an opportunity where we can find opportunities to collaborate as we're offering training programs, not only with just the Work Advance, but also the pre-apprentice programs and the apprenticeship programs that Alex is leading for the Coalition as well. So, you know, great opportunities for synergy, and I see that as yet another benefit of the ARPA funds. I know we've talked about also collaborating with Valley Economic Development Partners, where I'm president of their board, and you've provided some funding for them. That's an opportunity as well. So this is really helping also to catalyze some closer partnerships and collaborations here in our community.
I mean, that is just the best. I mean, when you listen to what we've done with our, our funding, we've helped so many communities, so many areas, so many different companies or businesses or nonprofits that would help our people get reinvested back into what we need today as a workforce. It's not like it was fifteen years ago, not even five years ago. I mean, we're changing every day, and we need to have our young people right out of high school catch up to where they need to be. And I applaud you, and I thank you because you also helped us with the statues. And Jimmy, you should have brought one, they can all see how beautiful they are.
Yes.
Yes, it was our pleasure.
I mean, if you've never been there, you have to go on a tour and watch them make things, the statues we have for the courthouse of the, the three individuals that are on top.
Jimmy had painted them all.
If you look at the detail.
I mean, it's unbelievable, yeah.
It was, it was our pleasure, so I'm, I'm also involved with the business located, the Youngstown Business Incubator, that does three D printing, and we had the honor and pleasure of working with the Commissioners on replicating the statues that, that are, that sit atop.
They're phenomenal.
The courthouse.
The detail was unbelievable. Jimmy, you're right. When I saw it, I'm like, really?
It looks like you just brought them down and shrunk them.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's unbelievable.
Nice color, too.
When would you have ever thought?
Island air, but we got it.
You would have ever thought that, that we would actually see manufacturing change from manual to machine-driven, computer-driven, what you do. I mean, I, I, I mean, it amazes me when I walk into the, the incubator, I walk into your, where you're at, Julie, and I look around and I'm thinking, wow, we are really into the twenty-first century full-blown.
That's where we need to bring our, our residents and our, our workforce, and that's why we're all working together to do that.
And it's great to see collaboration, and that's another point I make, is teamwork. We all are part of the team. From Mahoney County Strong.
Thank you.
Are you guys gonna take a picture?
You can stand here, wait, we're gonna give you the check.
It's in the mail.
Please don't.
No. That's okay.
Anna, I think it could have, could have been in the picture.
I'm sorry, I had a meeting at nine that went real long, I couldn't get down.
I can't wish your face.
I want to stand next to them.
Surprised, I know, it was somebody, somebody, something else that was always drawing on someone here. Oh, that's a nice one. Okay. All right, thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Good to see you.
That's why we already, we recorded the photo on. I'll see you next time. Actually, I have to check on the, it's in the CLWCC. Oh, oh, yeah, we keep it, oh, yeah.
I just want to thank everybody for coming down to the meeting today to speak a little bit about your projects. The Commissioners have done such a great job of selecting projects that really reach a large population of the county in the different areas in which they've chosen funding. There's, there's a huge population base, even though it's just one agency being awarded, the funding just extends out to the individuals of Mahoney County. So I'm very glad to be part of this project and the American Rescue Plan funding, distribution, and selection process with the Commissioners.
Thank you, Anna, for all your hard work with all these ARPA projects and COVID-nineteen projects. Thank you.
Item P is a resolution approving the third addendum and expenditure of the Mahoney Youngstown Community Action Partnership, MYCAP, to modify terms of household limits and administration fees of the Emergency Rental Assistance Agreement at no additional amount. Item C is also a resolution approving the first addendum and expenditure with Catholic Charities Regional Agency to extend until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and modify terms of household assistance limits and administrative fees of the Emergency Rental Assistance Agreement at no additional amount. And Anna, do you want to say anything additional on those?
I would just remind the Commissioners and the public, I guess, that these are the emergency rental assistance dollars from the first tranche that we received, and a total of six million dollars has been expended in the last two years to assist persons having difficulty paying their rent utilities in response or after response to the COVID pandemic. We'll be moving into the Emergency Rental Assistance Two tranche, starting at the close of these dollars for Era One, and that'll be an additional approximately four to five million dollars that will be available. That we'll start awarding those projects next week.
Okay, thanks, Anna.
Will you be with either one of these? You can introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Williams-Harris. I'm the project manager with MYCAP. Just want to thank the Commissioners for giving us the opportunity to help thousands of our Mahoney County residents, where we were able to keep them in their homes, where they weren't evicted, or their utilities actually stayed, stayed on. So we're just looking forward to helping you with their ERA, too.
Thank you, thank you for all your help.
Yes, we, I would want to say on behalf of myself, Anna, we appreciate all the work that you guys have done to try to get this funding out, because this, this federal government had some guidelines that we weren't probably as necessarily happy with, but we, you guys have worked with us to get those fundings moving, getting out to the residents and those in need, so we do appreciate all of the work on behalf of the Commissioners that you guys have done and have been a great partner with these funds. Thank you.
You.
Teresa, thank you so much, because we, you have the connection, you know, with the people, and, and you're able to get it to the, the people that are really in need, you know, and we don't have, you know, staffing countywide to do those things, and to partner with MYCAP is, is just a, a big plus for everyone in the community.
Yep.
So, we appreciate the work.
Appreciate it also.
You, you guys, you guys do the work of. You do more, you, you need ten times the staff that you do the work of.
And actually, yes, we, with, with that funding, we were actually able to hire on seven, and they're still there, so.
Oh, good.
We're still helping the community, and we're actually having people work, and they really enjoy it, so.
That's good. Take care.
Thank you.
D is Commissioner Sanitary. Pat?
Commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing the appointment of Zashan and Rich for a higher revised code three oh five point one four and three oh nine point oh nine, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. E, EMA?
Good morning, Commissioners. This item has to do with replacing a twelve-year-old vehicle that has had at least one major repair and has had some other mechanical issues since. This vehicle's available on state contract, it's grant-funded through the state, and it's a rather low options vehicle, but it does have a tow package which facilitates our needs.
Thanks, Ross. F, G and H, sanitary.
Commissioners, letter F is a resolution of approving the agreement with MS Consultants to provide professional engineering services for the new Springfield sanitary sewer extension. This is improvement number five thirty, in the amount of three hundred sixty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars. This is non-general and funded by ARPA funds. Letter G is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of four thousand point nine four to Air Gas Incorporated for the emergency deliveries of bulk liquid oxygen to the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant. And letter H is a resolution approving a paid administrative leave beginning August tenth, twenty twenty-two, for one employee of the department.
Okay, thank you. Number four, resolutions, A through H, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved, resolutions. Second?
Roll call.
Commissioner Taffacanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes.
Yes, and that ends our business portion of the meeting. Is anybody, Dave, Anthony? Already, we're gonna have a lesson in foot charts. Anthony, you have anything?
No, I just want to thank all the people here from the community, representing Camel, MYCAP, for all that you do for this community, how you help people keep a roof over their head, food on their table. As far as City of Camel goes, the school system, Matt Bowen brought this idea to us a few years back, and if you would have sat there and heard what he had to say, it was almost like, it's unbelievable. I don't know. I don't know if this can happen. But he was determined and through everybody, look where it's at today. The partnerships, what you do for everybody, and training our young people for the future positions in this community. I think that's the best way to go. And we just wanna thank you for all that you do and very proud of it all. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna thank everybody that's here. I wanna thank Camel, Julie Michaels, the Manufacturing Coalition, and MYCAP Cafeteries. You're all doing something so different, but yet not so different. It's all one big family, working together to make it work. And people that we service through MYCAP or Catholic Charities, when they listen to what's happening with the educational portions and the training in the two different areas, they'd be willing to probably join one of the forces to try to get some help. So we appreciate everything you've done. Dave's got, has a little chart for us today. So now he's starting to do chart work for us. Go ahead, Dave.
So I'm the anal one with numbers. And Terry, I'm glad you brought that up today to lead me into this. So many people are misinformed on where your sales tax dollars go. And so many people take and twist the dollars that are there and talk about numbers that, that they have not a clue is what they're talking about. So we pay in Mahoney County, seven and a half percent sales tax. And just to let you know where that sales tax dollars goes, there is, these are the percentages of the sales tax on my little thermometer here. And we'll start out by saying a quarter, a quarter, quarter, one, two, three, four. That's one quarter, one percent at the bottom here. This is WRTA. One quarter of one percent. This is the road sales tax that was voted in last year, being collected this year, going to be distributed, one quarter of one percent. This, one half that remains in this first one percent, that one half is for the county departments. That's everything in Mahoney County. That runs the treasurer, the auditor, the commissioners, OMB, that runs.
Courts.
The courts, the common pleas courts, the courthouse, that runs everything.
Board of Elections, Veterans.
Board of Elections, Veterans, thank you, Audrey. One half of one percent. Then, on the second one, one, two, three, four, three quarters of one percent is justice. That's the justice sales tax that goes to fund the sheriff, the coroner, 911, and the prosecutor. Three quarters of one percent. And the thing that I would, that I'm proud to say is what all these have in common, they were voted on by Mahoney County residents. Every single one of them. The three of us don't impose sales tax. We get opportunities for funding brought to us. We decide if we agree, we have meetings, we have public hearings, we put it on the ballot, we allow the people to vote on it. So you're probably asking, well, you know, that only amounts to a dollar seventy-five, 1.75, right?
Dollar fifty.
Dollar fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Six.
No, one, uh, 1.75 because of your WRTA, 1.75. 1.75 percent of the seven and a half. So there's another 5.750 that is remaining, that actually is 77 percent of all the sales tax we pay. So that's the last quarter here. One percent, two percent, three percent, four percent, five percent and a half. So this entire amount is the state of Ohio. And the state of Ohio, did you vote for the state of Ohio's five and three-quarter? I didn't, because it's imposed by the state, all of this. So when people wanna ask where your sales tax dollars go, we voted for every one of them, every single one of them that is collected within Mahoney County that gives back to Mahoney County. These sales tax dollars, they don't show me where they go. In fact, Carol's pet peeve is all seven and a half.
We pay.
They charge one percent from the state administrative costs just to collect it and write us a check. So we pay one percent of all of this back to the state. They took, and we don't pay it. They take it out of our monies before we even get it. So just to give you a little reference point on where our money goes, at the end of the day, we get a lot of bang for our buck on the amount that comes back to fund county government.
And the road tax is for five years only.
And the road tax is five years, and that comes off.
And it comes off.
And, you know, and, and the road tax, you know, you could, you could say what you want about it, but the reason the Mahoney County residents are, are, felt such a need is because of how they distribute the road tax dollars that are collected. When you collect, when you, when you buy a gallon of gas and pay sixty cents in, in tax dollars on top of your gas tax, on, on the gas tax, they collect it by the state of Ohio there, too. And what do they do? There's eighty-eight counties in the state of Ohio, and they take that pot of money that they collect in gas tax and they divide it by eighty-eight and they give every one of us 1/88 of the amount equally, regardless of Columbia County has eighty-five miles of roads, and Mahoney County has 515 mile of roads. There's no formula that, that formula is definitely not fair. It should be by the number of registered motor vehicles in a county or by the number of road miles in a county to come back. Because obviously, where the road miles are and where the cars are is where the need is for improvements and upgrades to the roads. So, you know, we took it upon ourselves as residents of Mahoney County to take and put another quarter percent of, one quarter of one percent onto our sales tax to help fund the Mahoney County roads. And, and the fair thing about the sales taxes is that it's estimated that 35 or 40 percent of the sales tax dollars collected are paid by residents that aren't Mahoney County residents. So people coming from Trumbull and from PA and different areas that come into our community and shop. So that adds a lot more monies into our county than aren't paid on the backs of, of taxpayers that live within the Mahoney County. You know, so just a little, you know, up, update on, on where our tax dollars go. Mine share is definitely not go to Mahoney County, you know?
And that's based on a hundred dollars.
That's just based, there's no, there's no dollar there. There's just, that's just the percentage of the seven and a half percent. So that's my soapbox for today.
How much money is that Brady Day fund out?
It, the last we heard was like three and a half billion.
And there's a sitting on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we've asked many times to have some funding for the campus of care to get more, more nonprofits into that building, to get some work done with the greenhouse and some of the other pods that we have to fix so we can make them for respite care. We've asked many times. And we're not through asking. We're still gonna continue to. And I, I don't understand, I don't understand why, and I mean, it's hard for me to envision, the way they distribute the money for like districts. When they know a district has something that's really good or we have projects going on that we really need to have help, like say the Lake Milton Project with extending lines out there, making it more appealing for economic development and businesses, because it is a great spot. We always have to wait. But yet, the walls you see, you know, those barrier walls, you see those all the way to Columbus, regardless where they're located. And then you have an area in Canfield that wanted to get them, and we fought like hell to help them do that, and they can't get it. But yet, you go drive through Cuyahoga, and, and I'm not saying they shouldn't have them, because it is noisy, the roads are busy. But what about a small area that have residents that live in three or $400,000 condos that might need that? Then there's all kinds of stipulations. So, I mean, we could go on and on. This is a whole nother discussion outside of our meeting. I mean, about funding that should be given to every county, not just Mahoney, for projects that would make them whole to some degree. So it's not just, I mean, that, we could go on forever. Anyway, anything else?
No, but I just wanna say, you know, Carol's right. And one of the biggest problems here, and it's been since I've been in politics over twenty-some years, is that we never have a local match to meet mandates for federal and state projects that flow down to the county. We've never had the 20% versus the 80, whatever the formula may be. And, you know, a lot of that blame's not only on the state, but a lot of that blame needs to go to the federal government, because we hardly get anything back here from the Federal Highway Fund for any of our county road projects. And if they would start funding that and beefing that up, we wouldn't have to ask the public to vote for a five-year sales tax to do projects. And even during the pandemic, when the state was sitting on all that money, they never even mentioned loosening some of those funds up to keep roofs over people's heads, put food on people's table. Sure, they could have reimbursed that money back. Why couldn't they have went ahead? And that's all we want now, and the problem. And Dave did a great job with his illustration of the sales tax dollars. And that's all we did here, thanks to the public.
Next week, I'm gonna talk about ARPA funds.
Okay.
Me, too.
Stay tuned. Stay tuned.
During the pandemic, when Governor DeWine had his daily meetings, that was brought up, Anthony, and he just fumbled over his words.
I remember. That's why I mentioned.
Well, that's for a whole nother meeting. We could probably have that kind of meeting and you'd be enlightened on many things we know that.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, you should go and talk, right? I know. Or go on your own podcast and really, cause what's going on Facebook? How they're condemning you guys, saying this and that, and it, like you said, a lot of misinformation.
Well, I mean, there is a lot of misinformation. But if they want the facts, all they have to do is call.
Well.
We've given facts many times here in this room.
We send out a newsletter every, every year.
We have a newsletter. What are they not seeing?
Tries to, to explain where your tax dollars go.
Facebook, and we don't get into that, you know, cause I, I just don't.
I know, but Facebook does a lot of damage. I've seen it done.
Well.
And the problem, the problem is, is that, you know, the requirements, you know, to run for office, you get 50 signatures and your name's on the ballot. And you can say anything you want, whether it's true, false, or indifferent. You know, you, there's, there's no checks and balances, there's no. But, but every, everyone, you know, the way I look at things, when you go to make, cast your vote for someone in any position, as, as a county commissioner, our county-wide budget is over $300 million, it's close to 300 million. And when you put just the general fund, the justice fund together, it, it's about 72, 74 million. So, you know, you're, you're voting and you're putting a person in office to be the chief financial officer or one-third of the chief financial officers of the county. You know, so, you know, the thing I ask everyone for when, you know, when they're running, I wanna cast my vote, I don't know, is give me a resume. You know, what, what gives you the authority? I mean, I wouldn't call, you know, if Joe got 50 signatures, I wouldn't say, okay, you know, I'm, I'm gonna come to you. I need his tooth pulled. I need a dentist, right? You guys, 50 signatures. And we'll qualify some to be a dentist, you know? I mean, it, you know, you just need to look at people's, you know, what their history is, what their experience is, you know, so.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
And I'm proud to serve with these two, cause they do an amazing job.
Well, we have a team. We have a team here, and you guys all know that, that are here. You see it every day. We do have a team. All of our, whether we're elected, we're not elected, we work together to make everything work for the residents of Mahoney County. That's why we're here. Experience counts. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tuckett Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Dispen.
Yes.
Commissioner Randy.
Yes, thanks for listening to my soapbox.